I didn't get one.
You didn't get?
I got a calendar.
You got a calendar? Yeah, Angie took a big old roll of calendars from that lady.
Normally, Mr. Pettit makes us start late.
We talked to Don and Karen about them.
We didn't even hear it.
When Angie and I went over, we were supposed to have that call on Chicago Magnesium. They were extra.
I hate when you give them a barb.
That's good, that could be fun.
What are you doing?
You don't know.
What do you got?
God, I got so many.
Really?
And I've been hiding them.
You've been hiding them?
To her because she's going to look over applications.
All right.
Okay.
Really, right? No big deal.
Well, I believe you.
Evening.
Sergeant at arms, can you get the council to Diaz, please? It'll taste like.
That's Luther, he's our sergeant.
I thought he was cheating at arms.
During these meetings, he's our sergeant at arms.
He's the number one crime fighter. He's the number one crime fighter.
Hi, Mrs. Uszak.
Hello, Mr. Bella.
How are you?
How are you?
Good.
And our counselor, how are you?
Super fantastic.
Super fantastic?
Hey, that's a good.
It doesn't get any better than that, though.
It doesn't get any better than super fantastic.
Why?
Wow.
I don't think. I've never been super fantastic.
It is so humid out there, isn't it?
It is.
Oh, but humid. Hey, Leonard, how are you?
Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for today, Tuesday, October 12th, at 6:30 PM. I would like to ask Sheila Shine tonight if you wouldn't mind filling in for Kelly in calling the roll at the appropriate time during roll call votes and the attendance. Would you please do that, Sheila?
Yes, sir.
No problem. Thank you. Kelly is sick. I'm not sure if she's going to make the meeting. So please stand for the invocation and a moment of silence.
Let's pray. O great God in heaven, we come before you in prayer to say, first of all, thank you for this community. Thank you for how you've blessed it, how you've protected it, how you've maintained such things over all the years. And Father, even now, as we're gathered in this room tonight, we pray for wisdom and guidance to continue to let this be a community where families can raise their children, where children can grow up and thrive and be all that they are desiring to be. So, Father, again, we just seek your guidance and your blessings upon the men and women in this room for their decisions and their leadership, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Ward, would you lead us in our pledge tonight, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Ms. Shine, would you please call the roll call of the council?
Councilman Span.
Present.
Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Uszak.
Present.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
And Councilman Bella. Seven present.
Present, thank you. Let the record show tonight that Kelly was sick, and we're going to have Sheila Shine fill in and do some of those duties, okay? Do we have any petitions, communications, acknowledgements, or remonstrations tonight? I have none on the agenda. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for October 12th, 2021, and also the approval of the town council meeting minutes of September 28th.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Span, for approval of the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Hearing and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committees, budget and finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Later on, in the agenda, we will be addressing our budget, and at that time, we will make a motion to work with our budget at that time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public works and utilities, Mr. Minchuck.
Nothing at this time.
Elections, public relations, town beautification, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, number one, under PR, I would encourage the council members and department heads to get with Linda. The annual crossroads gala, a thankful gala, is on November 20th. It's a Saturday evening at Avalon Manor. The town is going to be purchasing three tables, so if you want to go to that event, please see Linda in the town manager's office. We also have in our packets, I believe, Mr. President, the signature luncheon that you've scheduled on November 3rd in regard to signing the commitment statement of diversity and equality, and that is out there as well, right?
Yes.
Are we, we're going to do that at that event, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then finally, to Mr. King, I know Mr. White has been concerned about this. I want to get back, Steve, to the entryway signs on the three bridges that we've discussed, the I-65 over US 30, and then 93rd Avenue over I-65 and 61st Avenue over I-65. And I know you researched with NDOT, so the three of us picking out font, talking to NDOT, picking out colors. We need to figure out how to get the town seal. I'd like to see the town seal illuminated along with the backlighting of the letters that other communities have had. Michigan City has it, Al Berizzo has it. Lebanon is a little extravagant with their entryway signs, but Steve had some designs that he had shared, and now that I'm back in the swing of things, Steve, let's tackle that coming up here, okay? That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Environmental affairs, Mrs. Uszak.
Yes. Our last report on COVID, 34 more COVID deaths in the area, in our region, over the last week, they have passed. So we have 21 from Lake County that's included with that. So COVID is still affecting our region. We have a total of 15,469 Hoosiers that have passed from COVID, and so far, we have a total of 56.3% in Indiana in our population that have received a vaccine, both of them, the first and the second. And vaccinations and booster shots are given at all Lake County hospitals and the Board of Health. Walk-ins are accepted. And I think so far, the last figure I heard, it was about like 80 million that have not been vaccinated in America. So I got my booster shot last week, walked right into Methodist Hospital and got it right there. So I hope everybody partakes with that, and let's get on the move here and save our country and ourselves.
Thank you, Mrs. Uszak.
You're welcome.
Moving on tonight to personnel policy and employee benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Mr. President, we are in the process of looking for one part-time code enforcement officer, and with hopes of making him a full-time person in January, but we have immediate need for a part-time person, so if anyone knows anyone, have them get with our HR director, Mrs. Pettit, and fill out an application and a resume so that we can hopefully fill this position as soon as possible. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to public safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. President, I am pleased to announce.
Mr. Hardaway.
I am pleased to announce that the stoplight at 53rd and Broadway is going from red to yellow to green.
Great.
Yay. Great.
So I emailed everybody that participated in it, and it was a glorious day yesterday when I pulled down 55th Avenue and looked to the north and saw it red, and then it went to green, so I'm happy.
There's another announcement you should make. Did you go down 61st Avenue recently?
Yeah, sound was too quick and I couldn't make it under.
Oh, I'm sorry. Town beautification, let's go back. I know what it is.
I don't care who announces it, but we should.
I'd like to thank Mr. King for your diligence in getting that taken care of. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Unfortunately, I haven't had the opportunity to ride down 61st Avenue, but as soon as I do, I'm going to take a picture of it and I'll bring it to you.
You should do a selfie right in front of it, Richard.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to economic development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. As chairman of the Redevelopment Commission, I am going to make the following motion with Mr. Minchuck's blessing. My motion is that we instruct our new Economic Development Director, Andy Chilcot, in absence of our town manager, along with the town attorney, to secure two appraisals on what we have commonly referred to as Mo's Auto Repair. I know Jeff feels this way. I felt this way. I had a constituent come up to me tonight, in fact, behind the camera there, and asked, what are we going to do about this car lot? I'm tired, sick and tired of looking at that place. So we are going to get two appraisals, and the RDC is going to have Mr. Svetinoff talk to the property owner, eminent domain, make an offer, but we are going to clean that property up once and for all. So my motion is that the town attorney and the Economic Development Director secure two appraisals per the Indiana Code to start the process.
I second that, Mr. Pettit, because as I rode down Broadway tonight, he's starting to feel back up again.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
I saw that this evening as I came past.
Yep.
I second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mr. Hardaway to obtain two appraisals to purchase the, what's commonly known as the Mo's Auto Repair property. He is not the owner of the property, but we're doing.
Correct.
Yeah. So my question would be for council, would you like, Mr. Pettit, to include why we want to purchase that property, besides it being an ISO, we're going to expand the dog park?
Well, it's not.
There's a good reason for it.
It's twofold. One, if you're going to expand property that you own already there, that's one reason. But secondly, it's also a blight on the community.
Okay.
So there's two reasons.
So that's enough?
Yes.
And to add, Mr. President, the caveat, these appraisals and any acquisition would come out of the Broadway Tiff District through the Redevelopment Commission.
Our discussion, Mr. President?
Discussion open. Go ahead.
Yes. Mr. Hardaway beat me to it, but thank you. Yes, my blessing is there two, three, four, five, six times. I believe that, I mean, it's obvious, ISO and town, I think anybody who drives by can honestly tell that it's just going for naught. Also, I believe, just in my opinion, we've gave them ample amount of opportunities, multiple opportunities, to help work within to try to make this a better thing, and it's failed each time. So I think it's time we move forward.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Sheila, would you please call the roll for this important motion?
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uszak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
And Councilman Bella.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Seven zero, the motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on tonight to parks and recreation, Mrs. Uszak.
Yes, I have the figures for the last park that was rehabbed in Sean Pettit's ward. On the play unit, that was 30,197. On the rubber floor, that was 27,900. And on the landscaping with the stone and the gravel, that came to 9,000. So our total was 29,000 on Curtis Park, completely finished, and a lot of people do like it out there, Sean. I don't know if you checked it, but it's looking good now.
Yep.
And as far as I'm concerned, and from what I know, all the parks are rehabbed, like I said before.
Yep.
So if there's any questions on the new park or a park needing, you know, rehabbing, let me know. So far.
I know, Mr. Bella, you, there's still a need for a park in Ward 5, correct?
There is. You see my smile.
Your smile.
I mentioned it at our plan commission to a developer. I won't say his name now, but he's looking into it, okay?
Thank you, Mark.
In Ward 5.
Thank you.
So we'll try to get you going too, because we still have some money left in our budget.
Great, couldn't it?
Okay?
Thank you.
Sure.
I see another selfie from Mr. Pettit in front of the new park. Abandoned and blinded properties, Chairman, Mr. Hardaway.
The only thing I have, Mr. President, is that, and it comes under code enforcement, really, is that now we have code enforcement officers working Saturdays to, and Vicky made some reports over the weekend of catching people working without permits and looking into the automobile repair business. So I think that this is a great thing, even though it's an inconvenience for some people. I think it's something that we sorely needed to do, and that we should continue to pursue that to make sure that the integrity of the town remains intact.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to that. I had 18 calls not too long ago. Vicky had answered each one of them. That was regarding easements, cars parked in front of parks, a car on blocks, sitting on blocks. Tiffany went out there, finally gave them a warning. I guess they got it off the block. So they're keeping my ward pretty clean. I have to thank them, Richard.
Thank you.
Both Vicky and Tiffany, okay? And that was a total of 18 calls, and she hit every one of them, which was good.
That's very good. Anything else, Mr. Hardaway?
No, that's all I have.
Dean and Barbara White Community Center, co-chairs, Mr. Pettit and Mr. Minchuck.
I think most of us got the email, and Steve and I talked about this today at lunch, and I know Jeff's out there every Sunday with Maryville Pop Warner. There appears to be a problem in the concession stand. There was some water in the kitchen that Andrew and Jeff and Steve are going to look into. We're not sure if it's due to the slope of the concrete out there, or if there was something internal in the concession stand area that caused that. As far as the center itself, I think everything is going quite well. We are going to be, I'm going to be introducing our, and I don't know, Mr. President, if I should do this at this juncture now, but Terance Price is our Assistant Park and Recreation Director. Terance, want to stand up?
You're probably meeting late, but go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, I know. I'm meeting late.
Yeah, we had him here, Sean.
But it's okay. Go ahead.
He's a good guy. He can do it twice.
I know. Terance and I are meeting with Epic United Volleyball on Friday morning. They're going to be signing what I would consider, Terance, a long-term, a yearly contract for court rental for the volleyball club. We've got the Pop Warner Games going on Sunday with Mr. Minchuck spearheading the press box. Apparently, we need to look into some speakers repair out there, Jeff.
We got a few housekeeping items to look at.
Housekeeping items, yeah.
We'll call a meeting if.
Yeah, okay. I know we're still working on the bridge, too, right, Jeff? Or Steve?
Yeah, still working on the bridge. There's some structural issues they're working on now, but that's tentatively going a bit in the winter, so we can start in the spring with the bridge. And let me add real quick, at the last committee meeting, we had talked about some temporary directional signs.
Yes.
For Pop Warner and for events.
Rentals, yeah.
For parking. Those are being made. They should be ready this week. I talked to Lisa about it last week. They should be ready, so they'll have them next time the event, next time we run into that issue.
Sure.
So they should be done.
And I know Barb Young is absolutely killing it with rentals in the Mike Anderson Event Center for a variety of different events, weekend, weekdays. As far as I know, Terance, has there been any issues with the Boys and Girls Club after school program? Everything running smoothly?
Yes, I met, had a chance to meet the staff a couple of days last week, and introduced myself and talked about some different ideas, different things that we can do together to work and promote for the community. I think it's going to be a good partnership to let them know that, you know, it's not us versus them, but we are all in there together to work together.
Okay. That's Jeff on the left side. You got anything else?
You pretty much did it all, sir.
Okay. All right. That's it.
Thank you. Special projects, food and beverage tax, diversity, town's birthday, Chairman, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing that I have, Mr. President, is that Sean already announced it once, but at this time, we need to get approval of our diversity statement and equity poster signing for the luncheon. So at this time, I make a motion, Mr. President, that we have a luncheon which says you are invited to participate in a poster signing and pizza luncheon on Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021, at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Event Center Number One, between the hours of 11:00 AM and 1:30 PM. All town employees are welcome to attend and sign the poster while having lunch with your coworkers. The large signed posters will be framed and displayed at all town buildings for years to come. Please be a part of this historic statement of diversity and equity, equality display.
I second that.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. President?
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mrs. Uszak to approve the poster signing and pizza luncheon on Wednesday, November 3rd, for the purpose of department heads and town employees to attend and sign the large-sized posters to be displayed in all town buildings. Mr. White?
Yes, Mr. President. Appreciate the diversity equality poster. I just wanted to see if we can amend that poster to also say inclusion. I think most of the documents I've seen had those three legs of diversity, inclusion, and equality. That's my motion.
Well, we're not going to do a motion on top of a motion, and I will say that.
Can I amend that motion?
We already approved poster at the last council meeting. So if you look on your notice here.
Yeah.
You'll see the small one. Those are already on display in all town offices. This one is the large one there leaning against the front table, which is for us to sign just for displaying in the buildings. So when we talk about diversity, you know, and equality, I think it automatically includes inclusion, so.
Correct. And we voted on this before.
Yeah, so we would have to make a whole new motion to change the poster and to change our stance on everything.
Okay, I withdraw my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I withdraw my second.
Thank you.
What? Sorry, I didn't hear, Mr. Span.
Mr. Span withdrew his second, so now the floor is clear for us to vote on the motion. Is there any other discussion? Hearing and roll call vote.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uszak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
And Councilman Bella.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Seven zero, motion carries, Mr. Hardaway.
Second thing is that we are in the process of planning for our grand finale for the birthday celebration, which is going to be December 11th. We will start about 11 o'clock, I think, on Saturday, and we're going to have, we're going to have two different events for this thing. We're going to have an event from 11 to 3, where it's going to be all of the businesses and that have been here for 50 years or so. And then in the evening, we're going to come back and have like a cocktail hour for the, for those same businesses to kind of like thank them for their longevity and being in the town and sticking with us through everything that we've been through. So I'm encouraging all of the council people and the judge and elected people and town employees to participate in this all-day thing, and let's make this a grand gala and make sure that everything that we do for this is going to be a lot better than the first two that we did. So we're excited about it.
Where did you say it would take place?
Make your pardon?
Where at?
It's going to be at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, in the Event Center.
All right.
So we're excited about it, and so we look forward to it. We are meeting every other week now until we get closer, and as we, probably as we get toward the end of November, we'll probably be meeting weekly to finalize this thing. But we've got some great things planned. We want to make it a holiday festive event by decorating the outside of the Dean and Barbara White Community Center with Christmas decorations as well as the inside of it, especially we want to take advantage of our walking track and make that sort of like a winter wonderland. So we're excited about it. I think that that's all I have on that. As we continue to move forward, we need to look, start thinking toward next year's parade, because, you know, we're going to be out of the birthday celebration here pretty quick. So as we get out of the birthday celebration, we want to start thinking about a parade for next July 4th. So we'll start coming up with a committee for that, and all I can say is stay tuned, because we want the parade and fireworks, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So we're looking to have a great time there. So we'll start, stay tuned, mark your calendars. We're going to start working on that here pretty quick. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to department and commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, our Councilman White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, I met with Solid Waste District officials. I asked Steve King to come along with me, so we can both look and see what their plans was. They are definitely looking at, as a prime choice of, I think it's 8699, the old Girl Scout building. It's a really large-sized building. I think I may have said before it was like a $1.1 million event, so I think that, you know, we may be, and the final was the second site that we're looking at, which was in, I believe it was in Sherrville, Ohio. But I'm pushing the Solid Waste District for Maryville. I think it'd be a good addition, because all the kids from Lake County come there to learn about environmental issues and recycling, so Steve, if you had anything you want to say about that?
I don't have none at this time, Leonard.
Okay. So I think it's going to be a good idea, and again, I think it'll be a great addition. They've been in Hammond for about 15 years now, and again, maybe I neglected to say last time, but Hammond wants that spot for a fire station that they have right now in Calumet Avenue, so hopefully they'll come home.
Is there anything that the council can do to help encourage them to consider Maryville their number one pick?
Well, I would have to ask the expert here on.
It's your district, Mr. Pettit.
That is my side of Broadway, yes, Mr. President. Obviously, we gave a facade grant to Meyer Galaros, so obviously, we would offer up some type of incentives if Lake County Solid Waste. Now, Joe, I don't know how that, two governmental entities like that, if that's feasible, but that's the first thing that pops into my head is.
I think that.
The offering of a facade grant for the outside of the building.
Would be available to Lake County Solid Waste District.
It's really a great building. Actually, I didn't know they had a second floor, and one of the other options they were looking at is that it's really more room than they need, so they was looking at maybe leasing out some other parts of the building to offset the entire cost. So maybe if I'd have got to you first, we might have built the town hall there, but they're there now. But it's a great building. I think it's a great addition if they decide. So I will tell the board members at our next meeting that, you know, this is what the town mayor wants to put on the table.
My suggestion is if they are interested or showing any interest, our counselor, you could write them a letter that we're available with that building.
Well, I think since we're channeling things through Mr. White right now.
Yeah.
We'll channel it through him. If they want some type of backup correspondence.
Good.
I can always provide that. I can always provide that.
Good.
But at this time, I think it's kind of fluid right now
Yes.
to where you mention it, you say, hey, Maryville's really interested. We, we want to offer you a facade grant as an incentive to come here and see where it goes from there.
I think that's a great idea, thank you.
I would love nothing more to, to fill another empty building in town.
Yep.
Yes.
So
Especially with a worthwhile organization.
Let's think out of the box.
Yep.
You know, because one of their complaints was that, you know, when you get kids from Lowell, then you got to drive them all the way over to Hammond, and that's like an hour,
Sure.
pretty much an hour in that direction, then an hour back. Always was wary of that space anyway, because it's in a very area that's by oil refineries and things of that nature, so I never thought the air quality was good enough to take those children's on trips. But thank you, I will tell the chairwoman, Christine Sid, of our offer, and then I'll communicate with Mr. Counselor.
Go pro.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to the Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Councilman Hardaway.
No report this time. Our next meeting is in November.
Thank you. Stormwater Management Resources Director Matt Lake.
Thanks, I don't have any report other than I'm scheduling those meetings with each of the council. So if you haven't responded yet, just send me a few dates, I'll make myself available. We'll go over different areas in the wards and potential projects, and I can then itemize it out and get some costs and go forward from there. And also, we're making substantial progress on the Ninety-seventh and Grand Boulevard project, so that'll be a good safety, safety project. So I'm meeting with DLZ this week, going over updates on the plans, and it's getting close. So just want to let you know, thanks.
I would like to add, Matt, that, you know, I had my meeting today with Matt, and council members, you won't be wasting your time. He was well-prepared. He has your best interests at heart for your particular district, and I found the meeting very beneficial. So thanks for that, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
Skip the CVA for now. Department reports. Sheila?
No report today.
Chief Cortino?
Yes, good evening. I'd just like to send a thank you out to the citizens. We had an incident that took place yesterday. We had a four-year, four-month-old that was removed from the home by a known party. My officers responded in a quick time, along with our investigators. We obtained positive information regarding the child and the party that removed the child. We were able to make contact with family members, and fortunate, the child was located safely and returned back to the family. Also, we had a incident at one of our hotels a couple of weeks back. Quick response from our officers and investigators, got a chance to speak with some of the witnesses, and we were able to identify the alleged offender. Short time later, he was located, and he's going to be brought before the court to answer to that incident. And finally, if I can, regarding the traffic violators. I know we constantly getting them in on a daily basis, along with the council. And we are addressing those issues, and if you check with the court, whether the court here in town or the courts out in Crown Point, you will see that those violators are making appearances to answer to these violations. That's all I have.
One, one quick thing, Chief.
Mr. Hardaway.
I received emails from Councilman Bella today about Washington Street, and he forwarded it to you and Newses at the same time. Is there anything that we can do about Washington Street?
Well, I took a drive up and down from Fifty-seventh to Fifty-fifth and Washington, and not offhand, I'm not seeing anything but to continue to put that information out to the officers and continue to monitor that like others. But I know at one period of time, the, what is it, the stop blocks or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, she wants a
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps.
Yeah, there we go.
You can't do that, because what happens if you do that when
Snow plows.
when Steve's people out plowing snow, then, and they hit that, it's going to be a sudden stop. And it's going to jar them, maybe knock them out of their seat, and maybe more hazardous than you, you may be correcting one problem, but you're creating another one. So and, and the other thing that I would like for you to look at on Washington is that, you know, people are parking on the street, which is right in the, in the traffic lane. So if you could, as your guys are patrolling down there, if you could curb the speeding and then get the people to stop parking on the street, then we'll be able to accomplish two things down there.
Do you know if we have any signs, no parking on the street?
We don't have a sign now. Is, is that your recommendation, to put no parking, no street parking? We can do that.
In order to enforce it, it needs to be posted.
Okay.
Can't do anything without the sign.
Mr. King?
Got it.
Okay, hate to wake you up.
All right, I'm taking notes. My, my list is next, so I
Well, I have a comment to the chief. I have to thank you for having Mr. Jeff Rice out there for traffic control. He's been very visible in the fourth ward, and I believe all through Maryville, I've had different people call me. He slowed down traffic, gave out tickets, and he's very visible, so I have to thank you for that, too.
And also, I have a, a second one as well, Curtis, and he's been out there as well. And both of them really been making contact with the violators. And they understand the seriousness of enforcing this, because we want to offset these accidents, whether it's causing property damage or personal injury. And so that's the main thing, is to try to be proactive to offset those type of incidents. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to, sorry.
Mr. White?
I, I'd like to address this to Steve, Steve King, because we talked about speed bumps and the type of speed bumps they have out there. Of course, during the wintertime, those, those plow trucks will hit those speed bumps. But now they have speed bumps that you actually just bolt down, and maybe in November, you can pull them up. But the people want them. Matter of fact, that was one of the
Yeah, we've talked about it.
We've researched this before, didn't we, Rich? I think, Marge, when Dave was on the council the first time around, when we got in, and either Buscemi or Bauer researched by state statute, you can't put them in a public right of way, Joe.
Right. I, I would suggest not doing that, because you're altering a roadway
Yeah.
creating a potential hazard
Right.
where the town can, you know, be liable.
Yep.
I think you were manager then, Mr. Pettit.
Yeah, Dave wanted them on Seventy-eighth, I think, Marge.
Right, and
Just, just a quick
It was turned down, right.
Just a quick note, calling off what Councilman Hardaway said, going further south into my ward, Washington Adams Jefferson, just off of Broadway there, like sixty-four, sixty-five hundred block, we have the same problem. It's narrow streets, and you have parking on both sides, and it's two-way traffic. I think one thing we should look into, just in my opinion, throughout the rest of the county, around the same areas, they turn them into one-way streets to make them a little more accessible. And instead of doing speed bumps or helping alleviate the parking problem, I think we need to look into possibly making some of these narrow streets in these subdivision's one-way streets. Makes it safer for parking, makes it safer for the kids that are playing in the area. They don't have two-way traffic with cars everywhere. So I think, yeah, Crown Point does the same, yep.
And then put in bike trails with
Right.
And they're turning in across the street from the flower shop on the wrong side.
Right.
I've seen it. So I don't know if they need an arrow on both sides or what.
Yeah, so I think maybe a, just a basic traffic study of the town, of some of these roads that should be turned into one-ways, just to make it a little more easier for everybody would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, Mr. President, yeah, the reason I, I brought that up, because the city of Holbrook just did that, and that's kind of where I got the idea from. I also talked to Steve about maybe posting some other type of slow down, because I'm certain the police can't be on every street, how to stop speeders. And there are some, like, like the lady said in the email today, these people are going fifty, sixty miles an hour. So we, we can't not just not do anything. There has to be a way that we either just say, slow down, or we, we have to find another way to just reduce that, because other than that, you'll have to have a police officer on every other street, which I think they've been doing a good job. I think that when I talked to the, to the chief, he says there's been quite a few numbers of, tick has been, there's been uptick in tickets. So maybe we just got to put our heads together and see how we want to have a solution to that.
Sure.
Because not to do anything doesn't solve that problem either. Thank you.
Well, I think the chief is really trying now, having Jeff out there and doing his traffic control. He's been doing quite well so far, so we'll see.
Mr. President, Chief, I got a couple of phone calls during the, the hotel incident, and I, and I want to thank Costas, because unfortunately, I've had a couple of incidents with the haunted house and with the hotel incident. And I got, this is a true story, and I hope I have it right for Costas. I don't want to embarrass him, Luther. I get the call, and he tells me there's a shooting at the hotel, and they're trying to apprehend the suspect. I get a call about an hour and a half later, and it's Costa, and he says, we have a suspect in custody, Sean, and I'm sitting on him right now, in wherever they caught this guy, Luther. And Costas is calling me while he's sitting on the suspect. So I thought that was fantastic police work, and unfortunately, you know, the hotels, a lot of the hotels are, are in my ward, and we run into problems. And, Joe, we've tried to address some of those with, with safety and that, and the guys do an impeccable job, Chief. So just tell them we're grateful for, especially the hotel area. Sheila and I are going to solve the haunted house problem here next week.
Is that the, the same haunted house that you had concerns about?
Yes, the Ringos, yeah. I brought, brought that up. I knew the people on Eighty-third Avenue were going to be upset about that, but I gave the guy an inch, and he took a mile, didn't he, Sheila?
Yeah.
Mr. Span?
We, we, at one time, years ago, put a signs that shows your speed and stopping. And that temporarily changed a little, but it didn't
Do we have a trailer like that?
Don't, we don't anymore. We used to have two of them.
That was a message, that's a message for it, correct?
Somebody stole our speed trailer?
Might have stolen ours.
That's why we don't have it no more.
Did you file a police report?
Is your low jacket?
Right.
Low jacket.
We, we can look at some digital, uh, digital, digital display, uh, speed limit signs.
You can have those numbered.
That say, your speed is this, and your speed is this. So I mean, we can, you know, we can look at purchasing, you know, half dozen, dozen of them and put them in strategic places, and they can be moved to.
Well, I think what has to happen is probably the traffic study has to be conducted.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And after we locate, we can
Definitely.
Thank you all. Terrence, anything to add? Please come up. Two weeks now for you, right?
What's that?
Two weeks for you now, right?
Yeah, working on it.
You still here?
I keep coming back for more. Good evening, everybody, Terrence Price. Some exciting things that we're working on over at Dean and Barbara White Center. We have the opportunity to do something that's never been done before, so the staff has been real energetic. We are developing our program guide for two thousand and twenty-two. That's going to allow us to open up the center and have the community get involved with different programming, whether it's youth sports, adult sports, youth enrichment, adult enrichment, and special events. We're excited to be putting that together. We have a deadline of next week that we want to have everything together, so we can get it presented, so you guys take a look at it, and then figure out the steps of getting that information out to the community, whether it's by mailing or getting our presence online access, so people can sign up and do that. Also, what we're looking forward to is our pricing guide for next year. So there are some things that we're looking to get priced out for you guys to get approval of. These things are necessary for sustainability for the center. You know, we have bills to pay, and there's some things that we just have to do to generate some revenue to make sure that we are on our end of the bargain, bargaining and taking care of a beautiful center that costs us quite a bit, and we want to make sure we're making the proper decisions to also sustain us and keep us going. And one more thing that we put together today was more of a organizational chart that gives us proper titles and positions, so it makes it easier to understand, know the roles, know what everybody's doing. These things may seem small right now, but as you move forward, and we look forward to budgeting and improving the things that we need to do, it will provide a lot of clarity to how we pay our bills, how we budget and prepare for salary, staff, and part-time use. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. King?
My turn?
Your turn, Stevo.
Anyone left, Steve?
Half my list is gone. The, the stoplights repaired, the gateway signs done.
No report?
Fifty-seventh Avenue, we've had the contractors been kind of dragging out there. I had a conversation with them last week and also this morning, and they assured me that they will have crews out there working every day to start, you know, making more headway on that project. Concrete work is still ongoing. They have, if anybody's driven down there, they put new illuminated signs up at Broadway and Fifty-seventh, down at Harrison, and also down at Taff, so those have been installed. They're up and working, and they look great. So I did have a call, um, talk with the contractor about that. The paving program, we're in Ward Three now. We're about ninety percent complete with the paving program for this year. We're going to start the week of the eighteenth, which will be next week, working around Town Hall. I'll get it scheduled out tomorrow. I've talked to the chief about parking the police cars and stuff. We'll be milling and paving both sides of the, the parking lot, as well as the, the rear of the building. We're going to be doing some crack sealing in the front and also seal coating and re-striping around the whole building, as well as replacing the south entrance, the concrete entrance to the, to the parking lot here. There's some drainage issues there that we need to address, so that's what we're going to do. And that's all I have on my list.
Steve, do we still have money left to do sidewalks?
Uh, we're doing some sidewalks, yeah. We're, we're kind of watching, we're getting down there, we're kind of watching the budget to make sure we got everything on the list covered, and then, yeah, there's, there's areas that we are going to drop back.
Yeah, we had a few people
And we'll put a, put a little list together.
I think I told you I had a few people in Chris and Lee.
Yes, yep.
And then I called you, too, about Hendrick Street. Well, whenever.
Yep.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. That's all.
Thank you, Steve. Moving on tonight to general orders. First reading ordinances, we have an ordinance of the town of Maryville authorizing additional appropriations in the recycling grant fund, motor vehicle highway restricted, and general funds.
So moved.
Second.
This is ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-six. Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselak for first reading. Mrs. Hudson, anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. Simply to inform the council that the notices for publication were done appropriately through the clerk's office, we have proof of them, so you can be comfortable that when you come time next meeting to vote on the additional appropriation, that it was all done properly. I think that we've talked about several of these items already, but if anyone has any questions, I can certainly explain what they are about.
Are we talking about ordinance twenty-one twenty-six?
Different pieces along the way as it was coming, but quickly, certainly, the recycling grant fifteen thousand was additional appropriation to pay for a leaf vac. I forget right now if it's a repair or new parts.
It could just be, be, be parts.
Thank you.
Yep.
There's cash balance in the fund for it. They had talked about buying it, I think, at the end of last year, and it didn't quite work out, and so it, it came again, you know, this year as a need. The motor vehicle monies are, again, cash balance available, so that the appropriation is appropriate, and that's to help level out the expenditures between the regular motor vehicle fund and the restricted fund, which are supposed to be fifty-fifty pursuant to statute in two thousand and nineteen. Lastly, the attorney's fees all relate to the redevelopment commission attorney's fees that should be paid from the RDC accounts as opposed to the general fund. And so this is allowing that money to be, I guess, reestablished in the general fund and available then in that line item for additional uses.
Any other questions or comments from the council on ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-six? Hearing numb. Sheila, roll call, please.
Councilman Span?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuk?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
And Councilman Bella?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Seven zero, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on tonight to our second first reading ordinance is ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-seven. This is an ordinance, again, authorizing additional appropriations for the Maryville Fiscal Recovery Plan within Phase One and Two in the ARP, American Rescue Plan Fund one seventy-six.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Uselak, second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-seven on first reading. Trista?
You might recall that last time we met, I advised that the DGF was now advising that additional appropriation occur as opposed simply to the resolution and appropriation that you had done to start with. Because of that, the total amount, the three point nine that you see listed, is the amount of money that you received in the first half. Despite the fact that the original resolution discussed five point one million dollars, which were the amounts that were set up in your plan, we knew that part of that money in the plan wouldn't be spent until years three and four. Well, the DGF won't approve an additional appropriation through the process if the funds aren't there to cover what you want to spend. And so we had to reduce right now that amount to equal what you had actually received. It doesn't change the plan, it doesn't change the things that you want to do in the future. We just simply will have to do another additional appropriation next year when you receive the second half of the funds. So that remaining part between the three nine and the five one will be officially included at that point, and then you can proceed with the rest. Again, the notices were properly published here. We'll have copies of those to put with the files, so that the state board has those for your upcoming audits. We'll have copies of those to put with the files so that the state board has those for your upcoming audits and everything is in order.
Trista, would you mind reading into the record then each department and this title of the department and the amount for the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
The departments listed match not to the town departments, but to the organizational structure that the statute and the reporting requirements are requiring. They have divided the public health area into three different departments. You do not have them all listed right now because the committee has not included all of them in the current plan. They certainly can be added later if, as and if and when that occurs. So currently the monies that are being appropriated under the American Rescue Plan Fund one seventy-six are in department number one, public health, a total of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Department number two, which is negative economic impact, a total of four hundred thousand dollars. Department number five, infrastructure, a total of one million eight hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-nine. Department six, revenue replacement, a total of one hundred, um, mil- excuse me, not one hundred million. Wouldn't that be nice? One million dollars. And department number seven, administrative, fifty thousand dollars to reach the total of three million nine hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-nine.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Uh, Chris, Trista, what is the? I'm sorry, Mr. President. What is the total amount that we have now, um, in American Rescue Plans that we all are having in the bank right now?
The first check that you received is that three point nine plus million.
Three point nine.
In the total spot there.
Okay. And we're going to get a total of all together even for next year?
That is supposed to be exactly half.
Okay.
So we expect that same three point nine two seven again next year. It is supposed to be twelve months after the first money was received. That money wasn't received as soon as we had expected. So I don't know if they will go back to the original timing in June or July, or if they'll wait until the August, mid-August, I think maybe it came in. Can't predict that for you. But we do know that it will be that. Now, there's a small possibility that it could be a little higher because there are some communities that are not accepting the funds. Most of those, though, are very, very small and the amounts of money are very small. We have no idea yet if the state will redistribute those evenly across the units that did accept the money or if the state will put it back into their, uh, coffers to use on their programs. Have no idea. What we do know is that we will receive at least the same amount next year.
Uh, one additional question. Uh, with, with the infrastructure portion of that, and maybe I've asked you this before, but would we be able to look at and see if, uh, those missing type message boards, would they be eligible to, uh, purchase them through that particular, uh, infrastructure, infrastructure line item?
I'm sorry, the missing message boards? I don't know what you.
Oh, I was actually better than that because Jean Ward had said that they were stolen, so.
Oh, the speed limit.
Right, right.
Oh. That wouldn't be an infrastructure situation. The definition of infrastructure under the American Rescue Plan is much more, no, it is more narrow than what you consider normally infrastructures can be used on roads, for example. It's for water, sewer, stormwater, um, broadband connectivity for areas that are underserved. So that would not be included in one of them. The lost revenue category can pay for a variety of, of other more miscellaneous things. So if that was something the committee considered, it would be under that category. Of course, that dollar amount is not unlimited though, and so as a total, the committee will have to be careful and selective as they go along for what to spend it on, but.
So in the category of broadband, would that be a town function or would that be like, uh, in a sense that we have a contractor? Uh, that would actually do the broadband portion because I don't quite understand, um, how the town would be capable of, uh, of doing the broadband installations for a better lack of words.
So the committee has, uh, looked at an idea of allowing for, uh, public connections in the parking lots, for example, of the town buildings so that people that don't have broadband Wi-Fi at home at least would have a place to come to maybe send some job applications or work-related things or some schoolwork. There are some ways as well to then help supplement broadband into some of the areas that are not currently able to connect easily, more rural type areas. The way that the, the statute and the advice is written up from the federal government. So the town wouldn't create a broadband company, but there might be some programming that you can assist with.
Okay, thank you.
Rather complicated.
Thank you, Tris.
So how much money do we have left out of the three point nine million to work with this year? I may have missed out on some of the figures you read.
We haven't really spent any of it yet.
Oh, we haven't spent any of it?
We earmarked some, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
No, we haven't spent any.
We're earmarking.
Right.
So we still have a lot left in that three point nine.
I think the two pickup trucks for the fire department, I think
Okay.
was the first expenditure we, that Richard will approve.
Right. There are still ideas that are being worked on for different details. Uh, the food bank donation, the five thousand, we'll funnel through this. The fire department, two trucks were nine eighty-nine ninety-one thousand. But until we got this process in place, some of the other ideas that are going on couldn't actually be finished yet. And so there will be some things coming. You know, uh, stormwater, Matt Lake wanting to meet with you all about different projects in your ward. So
Right.
Those are all ideas that are, are coming and are started. The money isn't necessarily spent yet. Is some of it earmarked? Well, kind of, but it depends on what plans you put in place. So it's difficult to answer your question. I'm not trying to be obstinate about it, but there's not a good way to put a, a dollar amount on it quite yet.
No, I understand. Thank you.
We did talk about getting a, a report every meeting, right?
Yes.
From the clerk's office. So we'll know exactly where we are with this fund, what was spent for what and what the running balance is.
Okay, I did mean earmarked. So I'm sorry about that. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions or comments on the motion to approve? Hearing none. Sheila, roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuk.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
And Councilman Bella.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Mr. President, to Trista and Joe, since both of these ordinances have been properly advertised, are we within our rights to suspend the rules and read both of these on second reading?
I would not. I would.
I don't know why.
I would caution against that.
Yeah.
We, these are, these are very important.
Right. That's why with the advertisement, I asked.
Involving expenditures of.
I, I feel more comfortable being careful and going the proper procedure.
Wait till the twenty-sixth.
Appreciate your enthusiasm, Mr. Pettit.
Well, just because of the, some of the things we've earmarked with the fire department and HVAC and getting HVAC done maybe before the weather really goes bad on us.
Uh, we're just two weeks out, so.
Yep, so.
Okay, moving on to, uh, second readings. We have ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-five. This is the ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the year ending in twenty twenty-two.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hardaway.
We still have some, uh, work to do on this budget. And so at this time, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we tabled this, able to budget until, and I don't see the number on here as to what it would be.
Twenty-sixth?
Uh, yeah, twenty-one, twenty-five. Uh, ordinance twenty-one, twenty-five. My motion is that we table ordinance twenty-one, twenty-five until October the twenty-sixth, which is our next council meeting at six-thirty that will be held here in the council chambers in Town Hall.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Minchuk. So, uh, Mr. Hardaway, would, would you mind amending your motion to actually, uh, read that we were going to continue the budget discussion?
Yes.
Until next, until Tuesday, October twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Which would be our next regular town council meeting here in the town council chambers?
That is my amended motion.
Okay.
And I'll.
Mr. Minchuk? Thank you. Discussions on the motion?
Uh, no.
Trista, are we, uh, okay in doing this this way? Just need more time.
And the reason for, uh, the specific detail in Mr. Hardaway's motion was because that date was not in the original notice, uh, that was given to the public. Of course, it was for the meeting two weeks ago and for today. However, it's absolutely appropriate, uh, to make the motion that he has to finalize some details and to give the detail that he has, which will go very specifically into the minutes, uh, of today's meeting as well. And those are made, of course, public, uh, publicly available to any residents in Maryville, so.
And this would be attached to the, uh, Department of Local Government and Finance, right? You'll get a copy.
The minutes will be, yes. We'll send the minutes in when we, uh, send in the signed resolution on your behalf and that will help satisfy any questions that they would have.
Yep.
Okay, then for the record, I would like to ask, um, whoever does our minutes to include this part of verbatim for our minutes. Any other discussion on the motion to continue the budget discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
Aye.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuk.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
And Councilman Bella.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Seven to zero, motion carries, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to resolutions. We have resolution twenty-one dash sixty-four. It's a resolution transferring monies of the twenty twenty-one budget within the general fund.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Hardaway.
Second.
Second by Mr. Minchuk. This is a, uh, a small transfer of general travel expense decrease of two thousand dollars and a general postage increase of two thousand dollars. The net effect is zero. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to resolution twenty-one dash sixty-seven. There's also a transfer of monies within the twenty twenty-one budget within the general fund.
So moved.
Go ahead, second, Mark. I'll second.
Chair is going to recognize Mrs. Uselak for the motion and Mr. Hardaway with a second for resolution twenty-one dash sixty-seven. Again, a small, um, decrease in the general travel budget of fourteen hundred dollars. The increase in gasoline is fourteen hundred dollars and that effect is zero. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Moving on tonight to Board of Zoning Appeals and Large Gathering Actions, Mrs. Shine.
Mr. President, we have one petitioner. Would our petitioner please, um, come to the mic in case the council has discuss questions. Variance of use approval, eighty, petitioner eighty-two ninety Broadway LLC, owner eighty-two ninety Broadway LLC. Purpose: Proposed outdoor storage facility. Location: eighty-two ninety Broadway in a C-three highway commercial zoning district. Petitioner is requesting a variance of use from twenty-one dash one thirty-six. Use regulations to allow outdoor storage on a paved surface for vehicles, boats and recreational vehicles on ten point four four acres. Petitioner is owner of the property located at eighty-two ninety Broadway. Petitioner received a variance of use approval in twenty sixteen for indoor climate controlled storage and self-storage for property located at eighty-four fifty Broadway. Petitioner seeks to develop the ten point four four acres located at eighty-two ninety Broadway with outdoor storage. The proposed outdoor parking for vehicles, boats and RVs will, will be stored whereby larger vehicles will be parked according to size and height to ensure all vehicles are well screened from motoring public along Broadway. Behind a six-foot plus with heavy landscaping. The topography of the site falls off ten-plus or so vehicles off of all sizes will be screened by the proposed berm and topography site design. Maryville and other nearby communities restrict outdoor parking of business vehicles, boats and RVs, and there are limited screening, fenced and security control offerings. This would allow the controlled storage customers at eighty-four fifty Broadway additional storage for their goods and vehicles. For this petitioner only. And the conditions are no stored vehicles are to be occupied at any time and hours of operation are six AM to eleven PM. The vote taken at the Board of Zoning Appeals was five approved.
Well, the Board of Zoning approved it, right, Mr. Wiley?
Yes, unanimous recommendation for approval, no remonstrance, uh, against, and there was remonstrance in favor by the neighbors to the project.
And how many, I may have missed this. How many storage units were you planning on putting in there?
It's going to be for outdoor parking unit. It's not going to be a building unit. It's going to be.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be for parking.
Just for parking?
That's correct.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the project location at eighty-two ninety Broadway.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak, second by Mr. Hardaway for approval of this petitioner. I will add that I did, um, walk the property. This is in my district. Um, it's rather unique the way it grades down. So we're not even going to see the vehicles, uh, with the proper, uh, berm in the front, et cetera. So, um, the screening. So I think it's going to be a, a nice project. I don't see anything else going in that property. The state really, kind of messed up the property owner, to be honest, the way it's laid out with that traffic light there and everything. So I think it's appropriate, uh, use for this land and I supported it. I did speak in favor of this at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, so.
Well, I think it's great for the economy of Maryville. We're moving forward. And thank you for bringing the development into gear, into Maryville.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I know this is in your ward, but I'm across the street. This is in the broad, across from the Broadway Tiff. Randy, I got to ask you some questions and I apologize for not being at the BZA. But ladies and gentlemen, this is a glorified parking lot. I'm sorry to say it. And you know, we're just about to try and bust a guy up here on Broadway that's an eyesore that's parking ten, fifteen, twenty vehicles. He doesn't have any landscaping and it looks great, believe me. I'm just, in my eighteen years, I've always worked on this. Precedent set by your vote. And we have proved this. What's to stop somebody from coming somewhere else in Leonard's Ward or Rich's Ward or my ward and want to do the same thing? And we're ended up with glorified parking lots across town. I'm just saying. Rick, uh, I'll go along with it. I respect your opinion and your decision. I'm just, I'd have a hard time, Randy, if this were in Ward Six. I, the way it laid out and I looked at it in detail, uh, I have a concern about this. If it had a building with it and you wanted outside storage in back of the building, that's a different story. But to just have nothing but a parking lot and have it landscaped to hide the vehicles and the boats and the trailers. I don't, how are you guys going to control who comes in there?
This is Steve Schwartz. He's the principal for the petitioner to answer technical questions. We also have the engineer here this evening if there are other technical questions. This is more of a procedural question.
Right, gates, keypads?
Yep, all that.
How are you going to screen? How many motor homes you have, how many boats you have, what conditions the vehicles are? I get it that we're not going to see them from Broadway, Rick, but are people just going to start coming in there and dumping, excuse my French, crappy boats and crappy trailers and?
And leaving them there.
And leaving them there, exactly. We got trailers in back of the old Ethan Allen right now that we've had. We've had trailers at Meyer. We've had trailers at, by, uh, at home in the past, Rich, that we've discussed where people just leave stuff. I just hope you guys are going to police it.
Well, tell us the story how this is connected to the, uh, public stores that's going in the, the other building.
At eighty-four fifty Broadway, the project that was formerly Direct By's office building, that I've almost completed the, the build out for the storage for operation by a third-party management company, a major REIT, uh, that will be managing that facility. This is three properties to the north. It's an adjunct to, an ancillary to the use, the overall development there. And so ultimately, not only will it be fenced and secured, it will be controlled by keypad, it will be controlled by security cameras, lighting, specifically both major REITs and the way that we operate our facilities. This is not a standalone. We've done facilities like this. Ultimately, we know who's coming and going. There are rules, monthly agreements. You can't ban in your vehicles. You have to make sure it's not leaking. They inspected the folks who were operating the facility eighty-four fifty will be managing and overseeing. the folks who are operating the facility eighty-four fifty. Will be managing and overseeing and daily walks and daily investigations and making sure that this is properly maintained. This is not an abandonment or a facility. This is a tie-in to what we're doing. Properly screened, as Sheila pointed out, and, you know, President Bella has investigated and walked the site with us, both facilities and the site. We, this is a first-rate operation facility. It's not meant to be abandonment or a creditor. It would be a problem for you.
I just, I just caution my colleagues, keep in mind, the long-term goal on my side of Broadway in Six is that Century Plaza is the number-two site for a convention center in Lake County. And we're going to be talking with Mr. Doobie, and we're going to be doing all that, and then what happens, no offense, Rick, what happens on the west side of Broadway? And what does that look like in conjunction with what may happen at Century Plaza? We don't know what's going to happen at Century Plaza, but, you know, and, as I said earlier with Sheila, I got burned on the haunted house. Went along with the haunted house, thought it was going to be a great project, and boom, two weeks into it, and we got complaints, right? And I supported it. So just, just caution, guys. I, you know, I, again, Rick, I defer to you. It's your ward. I just give you my two cents, and I'll, I'll give you my support. I just raise some things to think about, folks.
I have to agree with Rick Bella, our president, on this, that nothing will be visible from Broadway. It will all be hit back. Am I correct, Mr. Wiley?
Yes, and it's immediately adjacent to a public storage facility that's been there for years already.
Right.
Okay.
What Mr. Schwartz is referring to is he has, has a storage facility now where the old Direct By building was. Originally, five or six years ago, he was going to do that building on this location. But when the Direct By building became available, he decided to go that, that route, and is now improving that, which was an empty building for several, for several years. And has now done that. And this new location is going to be, work hand-in-hand with that storage facility where the old Direct By building was.
Sure.
And as well, the people that used the public storage facility immediately adjacent have indicated interest in outdoor storage such that we're going to be providing. So that's the reason why.
Randy, do you, or do you, gentlemen, and, and I would defer again to Mr. Bella, would you have a problem with a condition that this get inspected by the town every six months or a year to make sure there aren't dilapidated trailers and cars and leaking and that?
Well, I don't, certainly we would have no problem with that, but again, yeah, code enforcement, we're, we're subject to the code, so that.
Well, again, this is a use variance, so at any time, if something happens out there, again, I go back to my haunted house problem, you know, we can reevaluate those use variances and special exceptions, can we not? Joe?
You can, as long as you put a reasonable condition.
Right.
And that reasonable condition can be.
And we, we had a, a situation in Mr. Hardaway's ward where we allowed, what was it, Rich? A pool hall and barber shop?
Yep.
And we ended up having to yank that special exception or use variance because they had, we had police calls up there all the time. So just so everyone understands that special exceptions and use variances can be reevaluated by the council, and if there's a problem, they can be revoked, correct, Joe?
Again, if you implement a reasonable condition and the reasonable condition is violated, then you can go ahead and take proper action.
Again, I'll defer to Rick, and, and I will go ahead and support this when it comes time for a vote. I just want to bring up some issues to my colleagues.
Oh, we'll be keeping an eye out.
No, my motion still stands the way it is.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Richard?
My second is still good.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, I'm kind of agreeing with Sean a little bit here, specifically based on how that might impact maybe the potential convention center there. I think he's looking at, you know, when you get the convention center going. So I don't know exactly how many parking slots or what size they are. The stormwater already do, did you do that one already, Matt?
I was out there years ago on a particular site. The way it slopes down, it slopes into the carpooling lot, right-hand corner of the US. So I was out there with Corps of Engineers with Steve Schwartz then, and we had some concerns with protecting that resource, and that could be one of the conditions, if there's excessive, or any spills out there affecting that particular sensitive natural feature that we have the right to, you know, rescind the barriers. But with the matter of landscaping, you mentioned the storage facility to the, to the north of the property. They haven't been maintaining that landscape. I've been concerned with that, but it looks terrible right now. So we need to send somebody out there to enforce that. But again, if the landscaping's not maintained, it's another violation that we consider. But I have a lot of concern. If that water or gets into, into that, retention, things like that. So the building to the south is a very nice office building, and they have windows on that side, and I'm facing the north, and they could see in there. So I don't know if they remonstrated or anything against this project.
They actually did. They remonstrated in favor of the project at the BZA.
Okay, and I was the one totally out of concern by that.
Well, after their questions were answered and the concerns about proper berming and fencing, correct?
Correct.
But there were no remonstrators against the project.
That's correct.
No.
So Sheila, they did also offer to give us, or they're going to give us, the code so that code enforcement and PD can go in there at any time and tour the area, make sure no one is living back there, and make sure there's no oil spills, et cetera, so.
Okay, well, we'll make that as a condition.
Well, I know that we talked about that during the BZA, didn't we, Steve?
Correct. We did, absolutely.
And cameras in place in case, you know, did that?
I think that needs to be part of the condition. We want to make sure that happens. We have to get access to the property.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay. Mrs. Uszalak, would you add that as to your motion then, as one of the conditions?
Yes, one of the conditions I will add to my motion is to get access to the property.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep. One of the things that I don't see is about the cameras.
Yeah, I was looking at Jeff across, and I was wondering if cameras were going to be installed, even though there's no building. It's a new business.
I wasn't asked, but he said there.
There's cameras and there's lighting.
Cameras will be installed. That's a part of him getting a license.
But I don't, I don't see it.
We can put it in the condition. We can add it, but it's a part of him getting a license.
That's okay. I'd just like to see it added, just to make sure. Because I don't want somebody coming back later and saying, well, you guys didn't put it in there, so that means we didn't have to do it.
Okay, with another condition to my motion, that cameras will definitely be added.
Okay. We should probably just add that we follow all town of Maryville ordinances and codes, right?
Okay.
But, yeah, okay. Mr. Hardaway, your second stand?
My second is still good.
Okay.
Right.
I think we're just nervous, so that's fine.
Nervous.
Cool under pressure.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
We have a call for the vote. Ms. Shine, roll call.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yep.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uszalak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettick.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Bella.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to old business. Is there any old business before us? Hearing none. New business.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that out of the ARP, I, I believe this is legitimate, Trista, that out of the ARP funds, that the town make a $5,000 donation to the Ross Township trustee for the Angel Tree program coming up this year at Christmas time for the kids. I believe you have a letter, Mr. Bella?
I do. Do we have a second?
Second.
What did we give last year, Sean?
A million, I think, Martin.
A million? Come on, Sean.
We might as well do a million again.
But how much do we give last year?
I don't know. Rich, do you remember what we gave?
I don't think we gave anything last year.
But?
We may not have given anything.
Yeah, because I do not remember that coming up.
I don't think they even did angel trees last year.
Yeah, they might not have done it with the pandemic.
Okay, so where did you want the Angel Tree funds to go to?
To the Ross Township trustee.
Oh, with Joe Shudick?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Well, Mr. Shudick wrote us and said, again, this year, we're expecting an increase in the Ross Township residents in need of holiday assistance due to COVID-19. I realize that Christmas is several months away. However, we continue to set our goal for no child left behind at Christmas. Having enough sponsors to fulfill all the Angel Tree wishes is critical. We are attempting to get as many donor commitments as, as soon as possible. We're seeking help from individuals, organizations, and local churches. Last year, we made seventy-six children's Christmases, just a little better, thanks to your supporters. Our office identifies those families in need on their application for Ross Township assistance and/or they receive food stamps, TANF benefits, or qualify for energy assistance programs. So these are truly, would go to families in need. And close is a hard copy of the card that we used last year, et cetera. Your help for making this a merrier Christmas to a child is indeed greatly appreciated. Sincerely yours, Joseph D. Shudick, Jr., Ross Township trustee.
Does that fit, Trista?
Yes, there's, there's a couple of different ways that it can, can funnel through properly.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And motion carries.
To piggyback off of that, Mr. President, at our next meeting, I'll have a letter from Salvation Army.
Okay.
Requesting, it's either twelve fifty or twenty-five hundred for a kettle donation.
Okay.
I'll, I'll have it next meeting.
Any other new business tonight? Hearing none. We are now open to the public. Is there any public comment tonight? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
For the record, Robert Farmer, Webhouse.
And Shondalan Guy.
I wanted to, just to give the council a update or status report. At this point in time, we have tried everything we can. We have went through all the process. We had the government come out here on June thirtieth, and everything was basically approved for the site. We do not have blueprints. At this point in time, we have did everything as for, it's like pressure, if you want to say, on our architect to provide us with blueprint. In July.
Blueprints for what?
Pardon me?
Blueprints to do what, sir?
To do our building.
That's the women's veterans' home.
Oh, okay, thank, I wasn't sure.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
In July, our architect sent downstate a set saying that they wanted a foundation, which was rejected. And it was like saying, our GC has made it clear. He cannot go into Ms. Shine's office and say to her, here, we can go out here and dig a hole. Because that would have been a nine-foot-deep swimming pool. Now we're stuck with, here we are, the weather. The weather's here now, and there's nothing we can do. This is like saying, we're here in the midst of winter time. And what is the problem? I don't know. I'm at a loss. We have our funds. Our money is there to be used for this project. We are not leaving Maryville. We're glad to bring this here. We're glad for your support. But at this point in time, I don't know what else to say.
Did you have an attorney representing you?
We had attorney Greg Bauer.
Okay.
Greg, Greg went.
I suggest going back to your attorney and asking him for it.
We did. Greg went, as, he just got back from Italy, but Greg called up Mr. Tom Koontz, and then he tells me, I, that same day, Greg called me back and said, well, he's working on it. It's been like all summer. And every time we get, only thing I get from them is strictly saying they're working on it. Now, we can turn around and everybody can say, well, switch a tur, switch architect in the middle of the road. We've been all the way through with this.
Well, isn't, isn't this a Department of Defense project?
Yes.
Why don't you have Department of Defense exert?
Well, you know, we have, the Department of Defense and the VA is paying for this.
Right.
And so their whole thing is, we have a local attorney, which was, we were asked to do. We got the local attorney involved. And the local attorney got everything done for us, as for us with the council. And yet, it's like, you know, here we are.
Do you have a contract, sir, with the architect?
Pardon me?
Do you have a contract with the architect?
Yes, we do.
And I have a question.
I would take the contract.
I mean, I mean, it's, it's nothing, you know, everything is in order, as far as like saying, we have done everything we can.
I have a question for you. Did you not have a groundbreaking ceremony?
Yes, we did.
Your pictures were taken. You were in the paper.
Yes, they were.
I was never notified about a groundbreaking.
We, we informed our councilmen.
Who?
Me.
Me.
Oh, okay. Did they inform you?
Yes.
Okay, I never heard about it. I've seen the picture.
Yeah.
And I had to stop and think. Where is this?
Yeah, it was my ward.
Okay, well, I didn't see any councilman there at all.
They invited me. I didn't go because I had a little bit of a COVID scare that week, so I didn't want to go.
Well, you didn't notify us neither.
Well, back to the, sort of back to the architect and the contract. Joe, wouldn't, the contract has got to have a deliverability clause.
Here, here's the thing. This is a, this is a private foundation or private enterprise going ahead, operating with an architect. This seems more like a private issue between the architect and between, and the enterprise. So they have counsel. They have capable, very capable counsel.
Yeah, Greg's.
That can go ahead, that can go ahead and initiate a lawsuit against, against these people. I would suggest, I would suggest, I would suggest too, again, contacting the Department of Defense and the Veterans Administration, because they're funding the project to put some, to put some heat on the architect themselves if they're not delivering the product.
The only thing I could do is follow your, I, I am getting ready, as I deliver the twelfth, I will be out of town until March first.
So.
Because it's like saying, I am at a point in my life where I'm not going to let this stress me out. You know, it's like saying, hey, I've had enough. And you know, and it's like saying, the thing, what we came here before you with, and that is the guaranteed dollars to do the project. And that's what we wanted to do. And we still want to do it in this town. As far as like, it's for female veteran. Right now, we have Schilling Brothers. We have the kids, kids sport, Aden Miller. They are all contractors that are.
Have you received Department of Defense funds?
Yes, we have. It's, it's in, it's in a bank.
And has the architect been paid by those funds?
Pardon me?
Has the architect been compensated with those funds?
No, we have not. We, we have compensated our engineer. We've compensated the boeing company that did the boeing. Everybody that has given us a contract or has given us a bill, we have paid them. Lawyer has been paid. He has been paid more than what would normally be.
Has the architect been paid or no?
No, he hasn't done anything. When you're talking about you getting something that's been rejected by the state of Indiana, and you know, how can we sit back and say, okay, we're going to pay you for something that's been rejected?
Well, again, I didn't know if you had to put down a deposit with him or something else for his services.
No, we did not. And so.
Well, again, at the end of the day, I, I really think this matter is out of the town's hands.
Well, we're not, I'm not bringing nothing to the coun, to the township and, missing to the council and say, hey, would you all do that? No, I'm just giving you a status report.
Okay.
We're just trying to make it clear that we've done everything we can.
Well, here, here's the thing. I, I'm sure the town and the town council at this point, if you needed any extensions for any approvals that you got.
No, we're not, we're not asking for no extension. We're not, and we just, as I say, I'm leaving. You know, I'll be back in March, and it's like saying, when I come back, hopefully, we'll have the plan. If we have them, we'll do the project.
I will, I will say that, I will say this. I've, from day one, since you guys came to visit us, I've always been a supporter of this project. I, I wish there was something the count, the town could do to help you, but like I said, I don't think we can. And I appreciate, I appreciate you letting us know. Should it come to the point where you may need an extension because your architect's dragging his feet or anything like that, I'll be there for you. I, I, that's the least I could do. I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Well, you know, I appreciate that. And again, we did put out the invite. We put out the invite. Just recently, the government had people that came into Chicago for a boat ride. I sent the information to Sheila about that. And, and it's like saying, again, you were invited. We had people that was there. We had like over a hundred and fifty people, which were con, union workers that were involved with that. They were there. And so again, it was open bar, open food, everything was there. And so again, it was open bar, open food, everything was there. We're supposed to get a skybox for the Bears game, and that would be open. But it's like saying, again, no, I want you all to be aware that we are here to, tonight, to basically say, we're trying to do everything we can. You know, and it's like saying, I've got a lawyer, as you said. We put it in the lawyer's hand. And the only thing we get is, hey, I made the phone call, he's working on it. Click. What else can we do?
So, to the council's permission, I'll ask our counselor to give Mr. Bauer a call and just get a status update on where we are with this. So, Joe, just, you know, fifteen minutes or so.
Yeah.
I'll call.
I'm sorry for the time, but I know we only had two minutes to get up here.
I'm just trying to think how we can help you.
And this is, this is a female veteran, and it's like saying, we are ready, and there are veterans, females, ready to move in. And yet, we have nothing to move into.
Right, because when I talked with, like, he won't talk to me. He says, oh, just send everything to Mr. Farmer. So I met with one of his workers, like, what, a month ago or so? And we went over the, we went over the blueprints, and it was like everything in there, that we went through each floor. And so the only thing that he had to go back and change when me and Mr. Farmer met with him was the, a door, closing off one. That was it. Everything else was done. All he had to do it, the next thing was, he just want anything that deal with Mr. Farmer. And it's more of like, now you're saying that you want to hold off. This man won't speak to me. Then when he came over, he said, oh, hi. And I said, yeah, I'm here because you won't talk to me. He looked at me, and he left out the office real fast. He didn't want to talk to me or see me. And the thing is, is like, I meet women veterans, and I constantly tell them what we're doing. And the thing is, is like, oh, well, let us know. I also belong to certain organizations. What's it, National Women Veterans United? And when I talk to them about it, well, Shawn, when is it going to happen? And I tell them, and their thing is, is like, oh, well, you know, they don't look at us as, as being the same as our male counterparts. And these are women that have fought in wars, and they have served their time. But when I tell them things like this, even at the V F W, it's just like, you know what? It don't even make, it doesn't make sense for me to mention it when we can't get here in this place. When I go to Chicago, and I look at Tent City, and I look at the homeless shelter by Roosevelt Road, and I go around, and I see him, and I ask, I say, hey, if you know, if I could buy you something, you know, sometimes those are veterans. And you have women veterans that are in these shelters that have no place to go, or they rather live in Tent City. And so it's more of, if you need a place, this would be nice for them. But because we can't even get the place out here, because they don't look at us as, as the same as they do as a man veteran. And so many people haven't served, and it's like, you're telling me that I'm not worthy as a veteran? Because I served my time? And now you won't help us, even though everything we have for this place, we have everything that we need, but you're saying, no, you got to wait? And that's, and that's, and that's what I don't understand.
Okay, well, we're getting a little bit off track, so we're going to authorize our town attorney to make a phone call to Attorney Bauer, was it? And make some inquiries.
Well, thank you. That's all we can add. We can just-
And we have your contact information on file, right, Sheila?
And we wanted you to know.
No, we appreciate you letting us know, because-
We wanted you to know. It's not like we are, okay, we just came in here and blew smoke. You know?
Happy holidays to you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in March.
Any other public comment tonight?
I said something to Mark.
Oh, I thought you said, see you, Marge.
Good evening. I'm Charlotte King. My husband, Benford King, and we live in the Ennsbrook subdivision. And I'm coming because we have a concern about, and you addressed it a little bit earlier, about cars parking on the street and neighborhood. I live right on Sixty-Fifth Avenue in Ennsbrook, straight down the main road. And I have a couple of neighbors that park their cars. One neighbor across the street has about seven or eight cars, including a truck with a snowplow and a tractor. He parks on that side, and the other car, the other house next door to me, they park two and three cars, you know, directly adjacent to them. It makes a dangerous situation there, because there's a curve there. Anybody coming, like, when I leave out of my driveway and make a right heading east, I may have to wait for another car heading west. Sometimes you can't see those other cars, because it's a big van, it's a truck, and then there's SUVs across the street. You can't see them when you go around there. And you addressed something about parking, no parking signs? I think I heard somebody say, it can be done. Can we get some no parking signs, at least not to park that many cars on the street? It makes it a really hazardous and dangerous situation. And we've been dealing with this for the last year. And we've talked to Jean, and Jean has come around and tried to help us, but nothing. We have, I don't know what's, you know-
How about the code enforcer? Was she out there, Vicki?
Who?
Vicki, the code enforcer.
No, I haven't seen anybody out there.
Against code, just to park on the street.
Well, people are calling her over it by me, too, so she took care of it.
It's not a code enforcement problem.
Okay, so who would have to go out there to inspect that? Steve?
Well, they can go and inspect it, but there's nothing you can really do. I mean, you're allowed to park on the street, that's the point.
Even if you have a driveway without cars?
Absolutely, you could park in the street.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not allowed to park eight vehicles at one house. That sounds like an apartment complex.
Okay. Sure. Commissioner Ward.
And I'm glad you brought it up, Kevin. If you look at your rule books for what is supposed to be, the street is supposed to be for two-way traffic, thirty-six foot wide. When that curve is thirty, unless my tape measure was made in China, it's wrong. And when the cars are there, you can't get around, you can't see them on account of that van, and they don't park too close to the curve anyway. And like Charlotte said, the one guy's got a trailer there with a snowplow on it, a truck. You can't park a car in there, but you park them on the street, and he got more than one car. And the neighbor, matter of fact, he has the neighbor across the street, that he moved his van in that back by her mailbox, so he could get his truck and trailer out of there to go to Moes and Long. But in the rule book for the town, it says thirty-six foot wide, and that is thirty foot wide. So that's one thing. They want no parking sign on both sides of the street. And like in down on Sixty-third, at the Ellsworth Place, there is twelve, no parking sign, all the way down. And you got parking lots to park in the back, and that's what it looks like.
Well, regarding the trailers, they have to be moved by October thirty-first.
This is one of those that they carry a lot more than Marge.
Utility trailer.
It's not our deal.
Killer trailer, it's parked in the back of his truck.
Right, no, I agree that it's a problem. Don't take me wrong, but we need to get proper signs up and put no parking on one side of the street, or just look at this whole situation. It's a problem all over town. It's not just there. It is all over town.
Well, another thing, too, when Jean came in and we had talked about this, the pictures that he showed me, they're not even parking up along the curb. I mean, they're two foot, three foot away from the curb.
Right.
So you're parking out, you know, you're literally parking in the street.
That's a violation.
Yeah, that's a violation.
We need to look at that and get them ticketed.
That particular guy, you're speaking about, cars away from the curb. They don't park any vehicles in their driveway. They got an empty driveway, but they park them on the street, which creates a hazard.
Sure.
Around that curve, and you got to be crossing your finger that nobody meets you.
Is his garage full of stuff?
Yeah.
That's the other problem, Mr. President, that I see in my ward, is people are parking in their driveway or parking on the street because they've loaded up their garage, and they can't use their garage-
Right.
-for what it's been built for, Sheila. As opposed to parking two cars in your garage or three cars in your garage. I got all my stuff stacked in there.
That's another thing. They do have a garage, a two-car garage, and the lady does park her, her truck in there, one, because the rest of it is full of junk. But then the other two vehicles, and then the last couple of weeks, it was three vehicles. I don't know if he bought a new one, because it had a dealer's tag on it. It sat there for three weeks without moving part of it, right in front of my property. I opened my window, and I got a look out at these raggedy vans and trucks. And then, like you said, they're not close enough to the curb, and even if they were, if they just parked in their driveway, they have the space to do that. I could see it if it was a neighborhood where you didn't have any driveway. But there, we have driveways that will take four cars. Mine will take six. I don't park mine on the street. You know, and then the neighbor across the street, I have seen eight vehicles at that house. And most of the times, it's at least six cars at that house, and they are parked. The one next door to me is parked here, and the one across the street is parked here, and there's just no room in that curve. It is dangerous there.
Is that just one homeowner?
Excuse me?
I said, is that just one? Excuse me?
It's one homeowner that has like six to eight cars, and another homeowner that has the two or three out in front.
So the one that has the one to six cars is causing you the most problems?
Well, both of them. Both of them.
Maybe we put signs that no parking on the curve, you know, because of the curve, we can do between these signs, no parking. Because it's a safety issue then.
It is a safety issue.
Let us, let us look at it and see what we can do within our own town ordinances.
Yep.
And if not, we need to revisit all of our ordinances. That's what the master plan's all about. So we need to update for sure, right, Sheila?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. I have one other thing. I don't know if I heard someone say with the paving, if it was ninety-three percent finished in the, is that in the town of Maryville? Was that you?
Yeah, about ninety percent, yes.
Okay, and I just, on our, not on our street, but on Ellsworth Place, south of Sixty-Fifth, there's a lot of, still a lot of big potholes there. I mean, you know, huge potholes that they didn't get to. Are they coming back to take care of that?
Yeah, I know, right where you're talking about. I was actually just over there the other day, and there's been construction of a couple of houses back there that has damaged the roadway. The potholes need to be, it does need to be paved, and we'll evaluate that more towards the end of the season when we see what the budget's going to be like. And that could be something that could be added to the list, but in the meantime, I'll have our public works department check it out for models. We're still doing some hot patching, too, so we can put a couple of patches in there temporarily if we had to, but we'll look into that here.
Now, what's the one, and I don't know what the budget was or how they determined what they paved. I noticed on our street, they pave up to here, they paved up to Ellsworth, dug, they're a little digging out. Then where that little island is, as you cross over, on Sixty-Fifth, right down to Ellsworth, coming on down toward my house. They came to a certain point, stopped, and some houses didn't get anything in front of it, you know, they didn't put the black tar there, and then picked up again? Was that the plan, or?
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Where you're at, we just paved, the overall street in general was in decent shape. You had a couple of bad areas in that, in those blocks, and that's what we did, is we fixed those areas. There was no need, there was no need to do the whole street. We just took the worst areas and did some repairs to them.
Let me ask you this, is there, there's a budget for each ward for, for street repair? Is that correct?
That is, that is not correct.
Okay.
That is not correct. How, how we, how we do our street program is we, we, each street is evaluated by, by a thing that's called a pager rating. It's evaluated, and then it's scored, it gives a certain rating. And we take the lowest, the lowest scoring are the worst-conditioned streets, and that's where we start. This year, this year and next year, we're doing our number ones and twos, those are the worst streets we have in town. So that's, that's how we choose what's going to get done. We do the, we do the absolute worst, and then we go from there. So each, each ward doesn't get in a lot of amount of money. They get what, you know, they need to, to get their worst streets done. And so that's how we do it here at the town.
Steve, I appreciate you, Mr. President. Steve, I appreciate you saying that, but it does cause the concerns that they're talking about now. Even though they don't understand the one and two ratings, the only thing they know is it came up to a certain point, and it stopped. I've experienced that, too, so-
Sure.
I don't know how we going to address that type of situation.
We look at it as aesthetics, you know, and you got black-
Oh, sure.
Right, you know, why didn't you just do it all? And then you got areas that, like, right there on that corner of Ellsworth and Sixty-Fifth, there's a manhole, you know, I guess that's what, drain, a drain hole. And they dug out, all up around in there, they filled that back in, but then around the drain hole is still rough in there. You know, cracks and stuff in there. So it's just, they just went up to a point and stopped.
Yeah, that was an Indiana-American water blowout that took care of that, and you also have, there's a filter sock laying there on the corner that we need to get. Yeah, I know, right where you're talking about. That was Indiana-American water.
Okay, so you all have taken care of that, either filling in the potholes or finishing off the street.
Yeah, we'll get, I'll locate it tomorrow, and I'll direct our public works to either hot patch it, or we'll, you know, see if it could be added to the paving list. That's not a problem.
Okay. And about the cars on the street, when will I, should I wait until the next meeting to see what you were able to come up with? Or, you know, after signs, putting the signs out, or is that something?
Why don't you, is that your ward, Span, Mr. Span?
Yes, it is.
Why don't you trade phone numbers, and we can let you know, and you can let them know.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be happy to get back to you.
I turned to Ellsworth and paid.
Okay. Good. All right.
They also had made it handicap accessible on the curves, and all that. All that was added this year.
Okay. So Steve, let Mr. Span know, please, what you find out and what you're going to do. Any other public comment tonight? I was seeing then, quick announcements. Our next town council meeting is October twenty-sixth at six-thirty. The R D C meeting is October twenty-sixth at six o'clock. And the town auction is October sixteenth at ten o'clock. And a reminder for council members attending and department heads, our luncheon tomorrow for the Urban League.
And planning commission on the nineteenth.
And planning commission on the nineteenth.
Madam President, I will be, I'm back now.
Are you back?
Oh, by the way, Thursday, Bishop Knoll again, Mr. Kuzelek.
Watch out.
Watch, you watch the sectionals.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
And vote no, all in favor.
No, abstain.
We have documents to sign, too, Mr. President.
I'm sorry?
We have claims to sign.
I don't know, do we?
I just got a text, and-
I don't think we're doing that tonight, because she's not here.
Natalie's not here.
Yeah, she just, okay. She texted me, asked me to give you-
Oh, are we supposed to sign some?
Hi, Karen, how are you? Long time no see.
Yeah, I didn't know anything about it, so.
I've been out.
No parking on one side, but that guy's going to do is going to take it to the holy damn church on the other side of the street.
This is the first time I've seen it. And we have the documents to sign, so you can always get them free. I think it happened.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I knew you, I knew you'd think of something. But, yeah, I went on measuring it, yeah, because I got it in the furnace.